Right, sorry, do I need to repeat all that?
It honestly probably.
I have a big mouth, okay. Roll call, Kaylee.
Councilmember Knight, here.
Stafford.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Darms is absent.
Here. Okay, pledge allegiance, we're gonna do if everybody can rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number one, overview, a discussion of fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. Uh, 1A is Devlin Moore Budget Workshop Presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening. Devlin Moore, Finance Director, the purpose of this workshop is to receive direction from the City Council on any proposed changes you would like to see be incorporated into the fiscal year 2026 budget. Uh, and this is ahead of your public hearings in September, so on September 10th you'll be asked to adopt the tentative millage rate and the budget at first reading, and then on September 23rd you will adopt your final millage and my final budget. My intent is to use the PowerPoint and the supplemental document that was handed out during the 101 meetings to kind of guide us through the discussion tonight. Is there anybody who needs a copy of the supplemental? Thank you very much. So with that said, I'm gonna do much less talking than I had the last few presentations and turn it over to you quite a bit this evening, but I'm gonna start out by giving again some quick budget highlights on what's in the proposed budget, and then we're gonna go section by section. We'll talk about the post-publication changes, the previous cuts and deferrals that were made by staff, the capital program, unfunded positions, and then how can we fund any changes the council wishes to have our focus tonight will be the general fund, but we're more than happy to answer questions or go into any of the other funds if you prefer. So again, a real quick recap of the proposed budget as currently drafted, there have been no changes since the initial presentation on July 8th. The Avalor revenue increased by about eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars or 10% and is, the proposed budget is based on the current millage rate of 6.8691. All other revenues decreased by 1.9 million, nothing crazy largely attributed to the appropriation of one-time grant revenues in the current fiscal year, so that's why we're seeing a decrease in those other revenues, and the budget is balanced with a transfer in of 147,000 dollars from fund balance. As it comes to expenditures, personal costs increased by 1.9 million dollars or 14%. This is largely due to six new positions that were added to this year's budget that were prorated, and now for the next fiscal year we're funding the full 12 months. The budget also includes proposed pay increases and fringe benefit, increases to various fringe benefits. Operating expenses decreased by 2.5 million or 2.4 million or 36%. This is largely due to the expenditures related to Hurricane Milton in the current fiscal year. The transfer to CIP decreased by 9.4 million dollars. That was a large decrease, obviously, it's because a lot of activity happened this current fiscal year. One, the City Council transferred 4.3 million dollars from the general fund to the Capital Improvement Fund to establish a reserve balance in that fund for future capital outlay, and then there was a lot of project activity including the replacement engine for Station 67, so a lot of big ticket items there. Transfer to other funds decreased by 136,000, that's primarily due to the one-time transfer of 165,000 from the general fund to the Stormwater Fund to pay for a pump, portable pump, and that was done after Hurricane Milton when we realized it was a need for it. Revenue assumptions, the already touched on the millage rate, there is a 10% increase thanks to the council as relates to the garbage franchise fees, there is a 66% decrease in interest earnings, I think council understands that interest rates have been at historic highs, and we anticipate interest rates to continue to decline over the course of the next year. In September, I'm looking to bring back to you the investment policy to hopefully add some options and criteria to help diversify the portfolio so that maybe we can augment some of these projected decreases, but for right now, we're looking at a decrease compared to the amended budget of about 771,000 dollars. There is a modest increase in all other recurring revenues, and it's balanced again with the transferring from fund balance. When we look at expenditures, it maintains all existing service levels and programs, it includes 90,000 dollars for contingency, it currently includes no new positions, there is 691,000 for pay adjustments, those pay increase, those reflect the pay increases that were discussed at the June 10th executive session, as well as 150,000 for the possible implementation of the pay study at mid-year next year. There is a 40,000 dollar compensation study in the budget and 70,000 dollars for the fire assessment study. Just want to touch on fund balances, uh, so this is showing all three general fund fund balances, general fund, capital fund, and the facility fund. The projected fund balance in the general fund is 5.4 million, the budget's calling for the transfer out of fund balance of 147,000, leaving 5.3 million dollars. The fund balance policy calls for a maximum or a minimum fund balance of 3.4 million dollars, uh, but because you use some of that money at mid-year to fund Milton, that's decreased down from, uh, the 3.4 million to, um, the 3.4 that's displayed here, so all in all, at the end of the day, the remaining unrestricted fund balance is 1.8 million dollars, alright? If you take into account the money that's been pulled out of that reserve for Hurricane Milton, it's really more like 200,000, but we are gonna get FEMA proceeds, insurance proceeds, and then any unspent expenditures for this fiscal year will go back to fund balance at the end, so I have no concern really regards to that. Then we have the Capital Improvement Fund, the, um, the budget calls for a transfer in of 2.2 million dollars from that, leaving about 700,000 in the capital fund. That 700,000's currently earmarked for the city's match to elevate the East Graves Avenue, so it's being kind of called for right now, and then the Facility Construction Fund, current balance is 7.9 million, pulling in 4 million, leaving a balance of 3.9 million, that 4 million is for the final design of the three buildings, and as discussed during the 101s, staff recommends moving forward with the appropriation of those and then, um, in the new budget year decide if you want to prioritize the buildings or not. One of the things we look at when we work on a budget is sustainability, and so best practice is that recurring expenses should not exceed recurring revenues, so what this is depicting is that the, there's a savings of 253,000 between recurring revenue and recurring expenditures, so we're sustainable. If that was a negative amount, then we would be looking at a budget that's not physically sound for the long term. It's not recommended that all of these funds be used, you probably want to leave some cushion in there given that we have those economic uncertainties that we keep talking about, the tariffs and hurricane season, I guess there's one coming this way already. I know, I'm trying to be positive, but yeah. It won't come as long as I say. It was only when McDallius said it was coming that it came, I've never seen it. Alright, so any questions before I move on? Alright. So now we're gonna take a look at post-publication changes, um, these, this is page four of your supplemental packet, we discussed this on the 101s, so staff has made a recommendation to fund a few things since the budget was released to you, one was putting the grant writer back into the budget at 30,000 dollars, increasing budget for a firework event for 4,200 dollars, and then to provide ample funding to fund a new attorney, we need to increase that budget by 64,000 for a total of 98,200, and staff recommends using that variance between recurring revenue and recurring expenditure to pay for that, so, um, no other budgetary adjustment would be needed to, to take care of that. And then also on the screen is the cost of the salary adjustments as discussed earlier this evening, uh, for a total need of 274,356 dollars. Any questions or concerns on the post-publication? Previous cuts and deferrals, so these are items that were cut during the budget process either by city manager or staff in order to balance the budget, a total of 467,000 dollars was cut, this does not include, um, the grant, I pulled that out because we've already discussed that during the 101. The full list of cuts is on page five through seven of the supplemental report, total recurring cuts was 231,000, total non-recurring was 236,000. Any questions, comments, anything on that list that you wanted to see added back in?
Yeah, I mean, that's just a bundle of everything, that screen, right?
Yes, it is.
Um, one of the things that I was looking at was the PIO camera, was that added back in?
That is not in the budget, because, yep.
I'd like to see that, it's 2,349 dollars, so she has the right tool to do her public information since she is kind of really stepping up the communication with the residents, and that's, to me, that's a low-ticket item that's not gonna make or break us.
Is the council okay with that proposed change of adding 2,349 dollars for the camera? Yeah, for Maddie.
You wanna say something?
There's a two, was it 2,000?
It's me, I'm right here. No, I just said I wanted to add in a public information officer's camera for 2,349 dollars, it was deferred, but since she's doing a lot more now, it seems like she's using her phone, to be truthful, so why not have the right tools to do her job, right? That was one of the things that I wanted to see added back in.
Okay.
Grant writer.
I'd like to see something added back in too, Devlin. The fingerprint machine for the police department, I think we need to give the police department all the tools they need to do their, um, that was about a 10,000 dollar machine, I think.
11,928, it's on page six.
Page six.
Two, six, ten.
Thank you.
Offering right there.
Uh, can I ask, can I ask Chief a question about that, or do you want me to ask you? Or I can ask, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Is that for our use internally, or is that for the citizens?
It would be both if we had the machine.
That's what I was gonna ask too.
And we have recurring revenue with that.
It, it's usually pretty minor, um, Deland is also doing it, it used to be we were the only ones, but they bought a fingerprint machine and they're offering it to the public as well, so.
So, so, so if you arrest somebody?
No, no.
What did Deland do to press?
No, that has nothing to do with the arrestable offenses, this is for employment checks and people coming in from the public for daycares and teachers and nurses, you know, wanting to have them get their fingerprints done.
So would there be a charge to those individuals coming in from the public?
Yes.
So the machine might pay for itself in the long run?
In the long run.
What's the charge, do you know?
Yeah, it's been about seven years since we've done this. I think it was 10 dollars per card for a resident, maybe 15 for a non-resident, or something close, there's several other departments.
Well, seven years, it'd probably be at least 25 bucks now.
Yeah.
Saying, right?
So Volusia County Sheriff's Office charges 5 dollars per fingerprint card and 5 dollar for photo service, but.
But they got a lot of money. Just saying.
And I'm sorry, did, did someone say Deland is offering that to our?
Um, Deland, the cost is 10 dollars for City of Deland residents and 20 dollars for non-residents.
Do you get a lot of requests like that, Chief?
We do, the only problem is it's gonna be is having the staff to take the prints, you know, for the public. You know, it used to be a volunteer back in the day, we don't have volunteers up front, I mean, we, sometimes we do and sometimes we don't. But we do get a lot of phone calls for it and we send them to, I think Port Orange does it as well, and there's a couple other departments that do it.
So is that something that can be done at the clerk's office, or it's gotta be done?
No, law enforcement.
Law enforcement, okay. I don't know, what do you all think?
So in Deland, I wonder who does theirs, do they have volunteers, or do they have, you know?
So that I'm unsure, but I am seeing like specific days and times, like, um, so for instance, Port Orange charges 5 dollars for their residents, 7 dollars for non-residents, but they only provide fingerprinting to the public on Tuesdays from 9 to 12.
And, and that, that's how we did it as well, Deland is Thursdays from 10:30 to 1:00. So, you know, you only open it for a very short window, that way you only have to staff it for a very short window.
Oh.
Yeah, Deland is Tuesdays at 30. But 10:30 AM to 1:00 PM.
Chief Miller?
Yes.
How, how do you feel about adding this back, or is it something that, since we don't have the staff?
Compared to something else, or?
Not compared to anything else, I don't.
I mean, it, it's got potential to make revenue, you know, for the city, but again, it's finding the staff to take the prints.
Right.
Is what's gonna be tough, you know, Port Orange had front desk personnel, several of them, they were all trained in that, you know, we have one lady at the front desk and she's gotta do other things, so. It would, it would be nice to have this, you know, and if we had the staffing or volunteers, it'd be great, but I can't, you know, pull an officer off the road, that's what was happening before our machine died, it was also like 15, 20 years old, um, you know, I don't want to pull an officer off the road to take prints when they should be taking reports and answering calls.
Got a question about the woman that.
Something nice to have, but.
Yeah, the one that died, is it still sitting there?
No.
Okay, we scrapped it?
Yes, we surplused it.
Okay.
Right.
I didn't know.
Haven't done this for quite a while.
Right, and now if we have somebody that we have to hire, like an officer, we have to send them to Deland, you know, we used to be able to just do it ourselves, of course, for someone that we're hiring, but we have to send them to Deland or Port Orange.
No.
Change your mind, or?
Well, I mean, if he's gonna have staffing issues, then it's probably not worth us getting at this time, I would think.
I was thinking maybe not right now, but maybe in the future if we can get them there where they have more people and things.
It wasn't a must-do on my list, it was a nice to have.
Yeah.
But you're not gonna hurt my feelings if we say no until we have staffing for it, you know.
Anybody else from the council on that?
On fingerprint machine, no.
So do you want to nix that for now, not go, move forward with that?
Alright. Thank you.
Let's see.
Um, I have a, I do have a question regarding the PIO camera, what type of camera are we looking at for that kind of money?
Oh, I saw that somewhere.
Yes. Give me just a second, please, I will bring that up.
I did not bring.
We have it.
Somewhere.
It's a, I'll, I'll read it off to you, and then I can interpret it, but I can Google it if you want me to, it's a Canon EOS R6 Mark II, full-frame mirrorless camera, and it includes a body lens, strap, a tripod, mic, battery, charger, lens covered before video and, um.
Photos, right.
She, she requested that, that specifically because it would help her with both her videography, which she's getting once a week on, um, and her last one was excellent of this full resource officers.
Yes, all that.
It also will do all of the still photography that she bought.
Yeah, the mirrorless cam- cameras are, they just came out like a year or two ago, so they're a little bit more expensive, so that's why I was just asking. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm trying to find my notes, I think.
Alright.
Yeah, you can keep going.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No problem, alright, so, uh, the capital program. Total capital for the general fund, and this includes the Facility Construction Fund and the Capital Improvement Fund is 7 million dollars, uh, the full list is on page two of your supplemental, the majority, vast majority of the projects are considered non-recurring in nature, uh, 245,000 dollars is recurring, most of that's gonna be your vehicle replacements and IT-related replacements, um, was there anything in that list of capital that you'd like to discuss?
There was some discussion regarding the motorcycle.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, motorcycle lease. Found upon that one, I don't.
Sure, would you like Chief Miller to examine it?
Didn't find that.
How many officers are motorcycle trained?
One.
How many officers are motorcycle trained?
One. The motorcycle officer, just in.
So we're looking to replace, well, no, we're looking to replace the motorcycle, I, I, just refresh my memory.
Year later.
So it's a, yeah, we have one more year left on the lease, 5,700 dollars.
So are we looking to renew the lease?
Not until next year, yeah, yeah, for this year we are, for 5,700 dollars more, to go one more year, mm-hmm.
Okay, but aren't we in, we're in the lease, we're kind of stuck on that, right? Unless we buy out of the lease, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So it's kind of, one of those things, I think, that maybe we just need to address next year's budget, right, and finish out the lease.
Yeah, next year the bike's gonna have to, they're not gonna, yeah, the lease will be up.
Right, right.
Correct at that time, whether, whether you start another lease would be for next year's budget, this gets us through one more year, September 30th, right?
This is fulfillment of our contract.
The contract, the last year, gotcha.
I don't know what we'd have to pay if we decided not to lease it and wanted to return it, I imagine it would be somewhere between 0 and 5,800, but I don't know what, so.
Something of that nature.
I think it's also important to note that we would have to purchase a vehicle to replace the motorcycle, so you're looking at 70 grand.
So he's only driving?
Yeah.
He's only driving the motorcycle and he doesn't have a vehicle?
Whether he's driving what, a pool vehicle?
A spare vehicle.
Spare vehicle.
We have, we have a couple of pool cars or spare cars, right, if it's inclement weather or his is getting repaired, he drives it.
So he does have something. Okay.
If it's available, right, and now it's, right, currently it's available, the spare, mm-hmm.
Thank you.
But the motorcycle's much cheaper than a car.
It is, I just, I, I personally haven't seen it out there, so that's why I was.
But he's assigned to patrol right now, he hasn't been out there, because the shifts are short.
I see. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Capitol?
The only other thing that stuck out to me, uh, just like a big tick, was the City Hall interior renovation for 1 million dollars, it seems, I don't know, that seems to be a lot of money to.
I don't think it is, so City Hall, we had a mold and asbestos report that was done several years ago, and as you know, we ran about a year and a half behind on putting on our roof, so we never addressed the interior because the plan was always we would wait out one wet season before we did the insides of City Hall to make sure nothing leaked. If you walk around in City Hall, you can see some pretty severe leak damage all over that needs to be addressed. The restroom floors need to be ripped up and the asbestos removed from them, we're okay on the mold issue from the report two and a half years ago, um, but we have also contacted our, um, architect to look at putting in some non-load-bearing walls in City Hall. If you walk through City Hall right now, you can see that we're really jammed in there. If you start on the first floor, we have a small area for utility billing clerks, we're, we're going to be adding a third desk, I'm not sure where unless we build a loft to accommodate them, I'm being a little facetious on that, but there really isn't too much ground floor unless we start moving the, the existing cubicles around and repositioning all of those, which is what we're going to have to do, um, following our architect's plan. Also, if you look at the downstairs City Hall, you see one of the big problems is, is that everybody washes their dishes and their cups in the bathroom, and we would like to add some piping into the kitchen area which is currently waterless, so we do want to add a sink to the downstairs. As you move upstairs, you can see that we currently have our Personnel Department all in one room which also holds the vault, which is where we keep all of our office supplies. So Personnel is an area that requires a lot of private conversations due to medical conditions, employee grievances about being treated unfairly at work, um, it could be that they need counseling on something else, and so when an employee comes in to speak to one of our two Personnel Officers, either the Director or the Generalist, the other one gets up and goes to work in the lobby and takes their laptop computer with them to afford the employee and the Personnel who's handling their issues and privacy.
Yeah, but you can still hear it, you can still hear it in the lobby, because when I'm in your office, I can hear Christine right next door too. So with that old building, it's really hard to build a wall that you can't hear each other, because it's the same way in the clerk's office, when I'm in Kaylee's office, there's that, you know, those kind of walls.
There, there may be some of that, but it is not nearly as off-putting to the employee that is coming in to explain what their problems are, knowing that another person is working at their desk right next to the person you're having the heart-to-heart with. So I agree with you, you may still be able to hear it, but there is a, a semblance of privacy that is being provided, and, um, you know, I, I, I get your point.
I didn't think it was private at all when you can hear the other person in the other room while you're trying to, you and I have had private conversations, but I can hear, um, your, your assistant, and I can hear Christine, and I'm sure they can hear us, not that they're listening, but I'm just saying.
A noise-canceling machine to address that issue.
Well, I'm just saying if you're gonna put walls up like that, it's gonna be the same thing, you're, you're basically, like you said, it's a cubicle, right? You're gonna, you're gonna build walls to avoid the cubicle thing, but it kind of is, because you can still hear it, because it's an older building, to be honest, right? I think that the repairs, the, you know, the asbestos, I was gonna ask you, can, can the asbestos be removed, um, and, and the walls painted, and the sink done, obviously, because you don't want to do your dishes in the bathroom, but I think where Vice Mayor's going is it's, was it over 1 million? It's 1.7?
Uh, we can keep everything exactly as it is and just squeeze in more people as best we can, um, to take care of it, but yes, we've got to get rid of this spalding, the baseboards all need to be replaced.
Yeah, I saw it, it was.
Um, it, it's in pretty rough shape, and I'm hoping, we were hoping to do it, to get it ready for your big, um, annual celebration of City Hall, which will be done in 2027? 2028? So we wanted to get started on it so it would be an attractive building, I've got to say right now it is not good. We can also eliminate the. We can also eliminate the sink if you'd like. We don't have a sink on the third floor, we don't have one on the basement floor. And we can still require the employees to do their dishes.
No, I, I think that's not acceptable, that they have to go to the bathroom, wash their dishes, like, that's kinda ridiculous. But I was just thinking that we're, we're, we're up here trying to figure out how to add things and save money and one point seven million dollars to redo city hall to make it look pretty for a celebration.
It's just one, not one.
Oh, isn't that it right there? Parking lot, oh, I'm looking at the parking lot, sorry. Okay, I apologize.
One.
One million, right.
For everything, and it's really beyond making it look pretty. If you take a look at it, you can see, and, you know, maybe it is this prettiness, but you can tap on the baseboards, and they're rotten through.
No, I saw it, 'cause you have water damage from the, from the roof, right, from the roof leaking.
From the roof and the side.
I can tell you, with any mold, whether it's black mold or not, and their mold study's two years old, so it had the propensity to turn into some black mold.
You said the mold is under control. He said the mold was done, yeah.
I said the mold study was two years old and we have not addressed any mold.
Got you, I misunderstood that.
So all that drywall and stuff has to come out, and they have to replace any insulation in those walls that are required. It's quite expensive, I know, I just had to go through it all.
A million dollars?
For a building that size, that wouldn't surprise me.
Well, I don't think the whole building needs that. I saw there was parts in there that needed it, but not the whole building.
I got a question. Have we had anybody take a look at it?
Hold on, hold on, one at a time.
Yep, so have we?
Address the chair, sorry. Go ahead.
So, have we had someone come in and, and give us the estimate yet, or?
Yeah.
Been, okay.
Lisa?
Question, is, is it, uh, is the building on the historical, uh, register?
Yes.
Yes.
So we have to be careful how we replace everything in it, right?
The, the building is on our, our, uh, district register. We're okay, we don't have to follow the state historic preservation guidelines.
We don't?
No, not on the internal, but, no.
I guess maybe, maybe another compromise is we don't do it all this year. 'Cause we're doing a lot this year, I feel like we are proposing different things, adding more in than you proposed in the first place, right? So maybe there's a compromise to do some of the work, and then maybe next year do some more of the work. Um, what'd you say, twenty, when was the?
Twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-eight, open to the hall one hundred.
So we got, so we got a couple of years, that's my point.
A couple of years ago, and we're leasing the building across the street for the explicit reason of this project. So that we could vacate town hall, use that building while these floors were restored. So we are, it's, it, it, we're just kind of moving along in that process, and we can take a different direction, but, um, just know that the whole point of that lease that we have, and we just renewed for at least one more year, is part of this process that started a number of years ago, um, was because we knew we couldn't stay in the building while the interior was restored. So, um, it's, I, I would say the process itself is going to take probably more than a year, um, because we're waiting on the architect to bring back some, like, red rooms that we would bring back to you all, coupled with some, um, estimates that are gonna help figure out which options. Um, I don't think the interior walls are gonna be what's expensive. I believe it's everything else, 'cause there's not that many interior walls that we were really proposing. It's, um, reconfiguring so that we can accommodate some of the growth that we've already experienced, as Dale mentioned, adding, um, the, uh, HR generalist that was not planned, um, in the sense of, uh, accommodating that additional desk. So that was the only thing I wanted to point out, is this has been ongoing for several years, and we do have the lease for multiple, a few more years, but we did just extend the year, the lease for one year. But I do think as we bring you more information, the, the big picture will come into, to view, and it will take more than one year to, to accomplish, um, what's already been planned, but yet you guys have to sanction and approve at some point. And that's what we're asking, is to hold that million dollars aside, but anything we go to do has to come back to council for approval. Um, and it is not recurring, it's money that is in the bank, it does not affect your ad verum, you're not raising your mileage to accommodate this. Um, and it can easily not be utilized if you decide, hey, you know, we've seen your, your ideas, your drawings, and we, we want part of it, we want all of it, or we want none of it. You're still gonna have to make that decision.
So what if we deferred this, and, until you got estimates?
Well, they're in process, we can have them in the next thirty days. So you just don't wanna find anything as a holding, maybe.
Well, I'm just, I'm just making a suggestion, I'm not saying I wanna do anything. I'm listening to everybody, and I'm thinking, what if we deferred it, you came back with the estimates? If we were already finished with this budget year, you know, for what we want, um, could, couldn't we just do an amendment for a portion of that to get things started?
Well, you could. So, let, let me, let me tell you how we were working the staging of it, because we are going to have to occupy the other building. Is the basement floor goes all the way over to the annex, and then the, um, middle floor and the finance floor take turns in the basement until everything is finished up on all three floors, at which case, the, um, basement people, the development services group moves back into city hall and we're done. So it was to move one group over there immediately. The police department is almost out at this juncture. Um, and we, we, um, would want to get started on it as quickly as we could to make those revisions, so that you can finish them one year, hopefully, and not have to enter into a whole new lease agreement with George Travata, which is expensive in itself, the lease agreement is.
How much is that lease?
I'd have to look it up, but I wanna say it's in the range of fifty thousand a year.
I was, I was thinking sixty, but we have it.
It, it's in there, yes, yes. So that's a big expense.
Five grand a month.
Yes, it is. Then, then, um, the other, uh, item is, you know, the budget is always just a holding device, and as Christine said, nothing, nothing will be spent until it comes back to you for approval. We don't have estimates on the parking lot improvements either, but they're all listed in your budget. And these are capital funds as opposed to recurring revenues.
So, are, wait a minute, let me think.
So as soon as the police department's finished crossing the street, you're gonna move the first group over there and get the project started?
Not until we have estimates, sir.
True, and we have to approve it.
Right.
Right.
Well, we need to get the estimates going, you need to, to take a look at those, you need to bless the work, then we would move over.
I guess, what I was thinking is, is, I think we all get kinda mixed up on this, but if that's a million dollars, and we were to pull that for some reason, and we didn't want that project, I'm not saying that, but, um, that money would sit in the capital fund, right? Just kind of open for.
Future use.
Future use, right?
Correct.
You can't move it over to fund a new position, or move it over to do a sidewalk, or, right? I just wanna make that clear.
You, you would not use it for non-capital expenses, which are personal and operating. So no new positions, no new, um, operating expenses. You only want to use the money that you generate each year for your personnel and your operating expenses.
So.
Capital funds are what you do with your savings.
So if you, um, if we don't use it, it sits there?
Correct.
It doesn't go back into the general fund?
No, ma'am.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Well, it's in the general fund, but it doesn't go into your operating expenses. What you don't want to have happen is that you develop your budget so that annually you know you're going to spend a million dollars. Um, but you know you're only gonna bring in eight hundred thousand. And you put yourself in that position if you use your savings account to pay for your weekly groceries. So it's, it's where you get yourself in trouble in the long run, as opposed to the short run.
Dawn, did you wanna say something?
Right, so I understand putting funds away for capital expenditures, and it's for our savings to do that, for like stormwater, it all says on here, alternate water fund, utilities renewal, utilities, blah, blah, blah. All of those things go into the capital project by funding source. And I understand that's where we're holding it, and we cannot use it. It is part of our operation, but it's part of our capital, it's not part of our day-to-day, it's not recurring, it's not, um.
Non-recurring.
Personal, right. So, that monies is monies that we've moved over to this area to hold, and we're holding it for specific capital things that, projects that we have to. Our infrastructure does not last forever, we have to replace stormwater drains and all of those things.
Just like you did with the fire truck.
Correct, so, with that being said, I guess what you're saying is, is that it's just city hall's turn.
Pardon?
It's city hall's turn for that.
City hall needs some help. So.
So, in, in.
Maybe it's 'cause I'm in there every day.
No, but I understand what you're saying. I, I just know that it's, it's difficult for people to, when they, when they see a stormwater drain put in, they're like, yes, we're making some progress. When they see a building replaced from the inside, which we understand, but maybe they don't understand the viability behind it, does that make sense? I think that's what we're trying to figure out.
Well, we, 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 we've tried to hide our problems.
Yeah.
Um, we have curtains erected, um.
No, I know, I, I, you don't have to convince me, I understand.
I mean, there, it's, it's.
I, I know, I do, I get it, I totally get it.
So, it, it needs some work.
Education to the constituents, understanding that this is capital, this, even though everything's in the same pocketbook, you're putting it aside for other things, and this is just now city hall's turn for renovations versus what monies we already have set aside, and what we're trying to now get a grant writer for more to fund our stormwater and all of the different things that we're doing, which we already have monies in there, too. So it's just a lot that we have to, like, have them digest, and I think that's where it's all coming down.
Yeah, that's the only, that was my concern, is that I don't wanna appear to the residents that we're self-serving our, ourselves, but we know that you all need a, a, a decent building to work in, too, and they need to understand that, that you have, you have walls that are peeling and the roof leaked, and, you know, and like you said, the floor has asbestos, and these are things that can make you sick, so I think that, I, I'm on board with it, I want you to fix it. I just wanted to make sure that we don't need it somewhere else, and if we can't use it somewhere else, then.
Sure.
It is what it is, right?
Well, if you can't, if it doesn't cost a million dollars, let's try and look on the bright side.
Yeah, your estimate, right.
It only comes in at seven hundred and fifty thousand. The remaining two fifty stays there.
For capital improvement, for something else.
For another capital project, absolutely, you know?
I think it's just worth discussing out loud, so people can, if they choose to watch the video or be in the audience, they can understand exactly where it's coming from, because a lot of people don't understand that. I think they have a, a, um, there may be a, 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 yeah, just a, 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 a wall up between what's operating, what's personnel, what's, you know what I mean? Not everybody works out of a budget this, designed this way, so I think it was worth discussing.
So, you know, I would invite any, any member of the public, if they wanna come in, we would certainly show them the problems that we have at city hall, you know, which have manifested itself from leaks from the third floor down through the second floor, heading all the way to the basement.
Which was the reason for the new roof, right, exactly.
Correct. Now we've done the new roof and the interior. Um, I don't know all the damage that has been caused, you know, until we get the estimate. I, I, I really can't state, but I remember when we did the original mold and asbestos sto- study, we had a very long worklist of things that needed to be repaired as a result of our water damage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you wanna proceed?
Alright. Alright, unfunded positions. There's a total of eight positions that were requested that are not funded in the budget, those are outlined on page three of the supplemental packet. The positions that are, uh, indicated with gold stars are ones that were discussed during the strategic planning session on May tenth. Those positions include economic development director, planning technician, two police officers, EMS captain mechanic, public works maintenance specialist, and a community events coordinator. The total, uh, recurring cost is, uh, about six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for payroll, and an initial setup is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and I will turn it back over to you for discussion.
The planning technician, that's, that's obviously working with, like, Joe and all them?
Correct.
Another planning person, right? And how many do we have of them right now?
Joe?
So right now we have zero, because we reclassified that position to an executive decision.
Um, I'm, I'm in favor of waiting on the economic development, uh, director, just 'cause I, like I said, there's a lot of things on the hook here that we need to do. Um, and I know I expressed it, I would love to have that for our city, but I just don't think it's the right time for that, so I don't know how, you know, the council wants to weigh in on that.
Well, to your point, I think it's happening organically anyways, so I think it would be, I think it's pointless to do that at this time.
That's just my opinion.
No, I agree.
Okay, anything else up on that list that you wanna discuss? Stafford?
The police officers, we've had two, what I would like to see is us finding a way to retain the police officers that we have, rather than adding two new positions.
Instead of?
Instead of adding two new positions, look at a retention rate for working with, working with the ones that we do have on board.
I, I think, I, I agree with you about the retention, but I think we really need two more police officers, go ahead.
But the vac- vacancy has been for so long, and it's like, the vacancy haven't been that long?
Do you wanna talk, you wanna?
Chief. On the, uh, two new officers, that you wanna bring on board.
How long's the vacancy been?
Has been available.
I've got four vacancies, right, right as I said today.
Four vacancies, and we're talking about having two more?
Well, well, I, I think some new information has come to light since we put this on the cut list. And one is, you know, as, as everyone knows, um, the sheriff gave us back, well, gave us the SRO responsibility at University High School and River Springs Middle. And we did not realize, we just now started University High. We did not realize we would become the prime, uh, responder to anything that happens at University High, as opposed to the sheriff's officer. Nor did we realize we would be required to provide the police presence at all home football games and at all home basketball games. So, I've got to say, yes, and there's thirty-three basketball games, is that correct?
No.
Oh, thank goodness.
No.
Only.
Yeah, yeah, basketball's not done, football's only, like, four, uh, four home games.
In the wrong season.
Four away games, two, yeah.
Well, it's, it's fixing to be football season.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You know, it's not thirty-three.
I'm, I'm not gonna discuss sports anymore, then.
They'll retire sooner.
There's a lot more work associated with being the SRO at University High than we ever did. And then during the, um, course of, um, union negotiations, I want to say we, we did. I want to say we, we did some delving into vacancy rates. Our current vacancy rate in our police force is about ten percent, which, um, it has almost been a permanent vacancy rate. And we would like, you know, if you're always going to have four positions vacant, we need to have two more filled. And I don't know how else to get there, folks. Um, when you look at small, medium, and large police departments, you find that small police departments wind up having a higher turnover and vacancy rate than medium police departments or high, or large police departments. And that is in the eighteen percent range. If you look at city governments, our annual turnover is around fourteen percent. And it's really rare that you've ever got everything all filled.
Correct.
You know, we can always use more police officers. Uh, I don't know how, you know, and I think through the unions, we're addressing the retainage as best we can at this point. And that's how you would address that, is trying to make people want to stay here as much as they can. But I don't know what we'd do about the ex-added by our, our SRO positions, so.
So you're actually looking at four offices, but two are unfunded?
In this, in this budget here? No, two, two additional officers is what I asked for. I ha- I have four vacancies in that, right now. But we anticipate to try to, you know, fill those as, as best we can and get to full staffing. And I could use two additional to reduce some of the overtime and whatnot.
We have four vacant positions right this moment.
Right now.
Hold on, hold on, one at a time. Dawn?
So to your point, you have a couple of officers that are in the academy currently that are planning to come to Warren City?
We have one in the academy and one in training.
Training, okay. All right.
Not counting those four.
Not counting those four.
It'll be the end of the year before they hit the streets and can affect a patrol shift.
Got you.
Stafford, did you want to say?
I'm just trying to figure this one out. So you have a total of six open positions at this time?
Four as we sit today, four.
Four.
I'm, I'm asking for two additional in next year's budget. That's what was not, not funded in the budget, right?
Right.
So if we look at next year, if.
October.
Right now, we have four vacant positions. We have twenty-six sworn officers.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight sworn officers. Four of those people are, have left the organization and are recruiting to fill those slots right now.
And there's one in training and one in the academy. He says by the end of the year, right? They, they would be finished, but this whole.
Outside of the four.
Oh, outside the four, okay. But this conversation is about next year's budget so that we can give him the permission to obtain two additional officers. That's what we're talking about. Not talking about right now, we're talking about next year's budget we're trying to plan, right?
With the addition of these two officers, we would have thirty sworn officers in our ranks if all of our positions were filled.
Right.
If all of our positions were filled today, we would have twenty-eight.
I, I personally feel like we should go with that, two police officers. Um, I know y'all have had a hard time lately and I think as a council, we should give them the tools they need to be successful. I remember at our strategic planning listen to deputy chief feeling the frustration of this and mentioning that he could use more people, you know? And so they're screaming out loud, we need help. And we need to give them the right tools. Public safety is first when it comes to police and fire in my, in my mind for our city because, you know, someone knocks down your door, you know, Home of Asia, whatever it may be. If we don't have police, then what happens, right? We need you to fire, but I'm just saying, you're both equally important to me. And so I feel like we should fund that. Dawn?
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in on it, so it might, just bear with me for a moment. So the, um, calls for service, you guys all received.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you guys all received an email. And there were seventy-one calls for service in one twenty-four hour period last Saturday. This, not this past one, but prior. We had two officers and one sergeant on shift. We had to pull in someone else for overtime for six hours on each of those shifts. So we've got two officers and one sergeant, plus someone that's filling in for six hours on each twelve-hour shift. Let me paint a picture for you because if we've got one officer who is pulled over, someone in a car three deep and they suspect there might be drugs, but they're saying, no, I, I want to talk to your supervisor, you got to pull that sergeant over there to that call. Now we've got to wait also for county to come because county's going to bring the dog because they didn't, they didn't let you search their car. So now we've got an officer and we've got a sergeant. And we might have this extra guy out here who we've just offered the overtime to, but we're, we're honestly, we're, we're overpaying this person to be on shift where we could have a regular officer. And we've got one person patrolling the whole city while they're tied up. What if you get a domestic violence call? Then who's patrolling the city? Absolutely no one. So in my opinion, we need, we're not even at staff. Calea Standards, which is a law enforcement thing, says that you have to have two point five officers per thousand people. We don't even have that staffed. So we are running in the red all the time for public safety.
That's unacceptable.
Pardon?
That's unacceptable. I, I agree with you.
Very unacceptable. It, it just cannot happen. So we can save money here and five dollars there and eighty-five dollars here. But if we are not protecting our citizens, what are we doing? It just makes no sense. And I think for what they're asking for and what we can kind of provide, I think that we need to do that because we're not only, are you talking about retention and I get that, we do need to retain. But we can't retain people if they're feeling the pressure of being overworked all the time. They're not going to stay. You've got retainage problems not only because they're looking at, this one pays me a dollar more an hour. Trust me, they're not going to drive to Orlando just to make a dollar more an hour. That's not happening. You've got retention issues for other reasons. Not all the time does things go as planned, right? We've got employee that maybe, you know, oopsie, and, and here we go, we don't have them on the road anymore because they're involved in something else, right? So we need to provide the officers for the police department to be able to protect our city and to be able to patrol properly because I can guarantee you, if they're taking twenty-five back-to-back, back-to-back, back-to-back calls, they're not going to stay because that's just not the way that it works. Orlando doesn't even do that. I've asked Orange County, they don't even do that. They have sixteen officers, thirty officers at one time on one sector. So we're talking about the whole city of Warren City. Anyway, that's just my soapbox. I'm just.
Well, and, and to add to that, I was just thinking about in the past where I had questioned y'all and said, well, nobody went to that when they called. And they were like, you were like, well, we had so many people on the road, we have to take the highest priority first.
Yes.
Right? And that's probably everywhere, right? So if, you know, if there's a robbery or something, obviously you're going to take that over a, a dog. I'm just using, it's probably a bad, you know, example, but my point is, is that you can't cover everything right now because you don't have enough people. Is that correct?
Yeah, just to reassure everybody, we're going to go to every call that, when people call it, call it in.
Well, yeah.
We prioritize it.
That's what I meant.
It may go to the bottom of the list.
Sorry, I shouldn't say it like that.
You know, no, we're gonna, we're gonna go to it, but it could be a couple other, you know, important priority calls.
You had more people, that just makes it a little easier to handle, right?
Oh, that would definitely make it easier. We'd love to, to do that. You painted a wonderful picture, Dawn. I mean, that's every day. We make arrests every day and have to drive to Daytona with, with our.
Let's take that out of it. Get a DUI, you're talking three, four hours.
Four hours. Gone for four hours minimum.
Dana, did you want to say something?
Um, I think another thing too is, is, I mean, that, that increases public safety, right? But at the same time, we want to, we want to be able to retain folks. And I think a healthy work-life balance is important to people today.
Absolutely.
And if they don't have that, that's what's making people leave their jobs.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree.
So adding the additional officers and getting to full staff, I think is important. Because they'll start seeing a, a better work-life balance, right?
Yes. I mean, everybody loves overtime. They like the extra money, but you don't want to work them to death, you know, and they need some time off, I agree. And we may be small, but we're busy. We're a busy city.
And you're getting busier, right?
A lot of transient traffic that, you know, we may have like fifteen thousand people that live here, quote-unquote. But we've got sixty grand coming through our city all the time, right?
Right.
Passing through, so, anyway. I'll stick down.
Anybody else from the council? Okay.
John, great job.
So it sounds like we're on board with the two police officers, right? Okay, anything else on that list from the unfunded positions that you want to pull? Right? Devlin, is that what we're?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just want to make sure so we can move this forward here. Um, the community events coordinator is starred, the police off- so we already, that was established. So the only one that we, I think agreed upon was to pull the economic development director and not put that in as a funded position, correct?
Well, you did, did do that. We have not discussed by our public services or community events coordinator.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. We, we just discussed the police officers and I, uh, with a head nod, I think we're in agreeance to fund the two police officers so we can pull that from the unfunded and put it to the funded, right? The, the community events coordinator, um.
Deferred.
What's that?
I'm sorry, I was deferred.
Deferred, right. So the reason I was pushing for that was because, um, you know, Maddie is inundated with events instead of doing the public information. And I think what she's doing on with public information is phenomenal. And I've been hearing things, I don't know about you all, they're just like, wow, that's really cool. We're getting to see what's happening at the meetings. We're getting, you know, information about the parks, you know? It's really showing engagement with the residents. Um, and then also, I had mentioned earlier to Dale, but we had taken that sponsorship money back. And I thought that's where we were putting that thirty thousand dollars was towards that. Can you touch on that with the council?
Well, I'll, I'll try to. So the general fund is the general fund and you don't take from one and put into another. In fact, it's kind of structured, um, more or less along department and division lines. The sponsorship money was in the city council's budget. Um, and the city council's budget, without opening my budget book, is staying pretty much flat this year, even though there are built-in increases to it. And a lot more into travel and training to deal with, um, trips to Tallahassee for, um, Florida League of Cities events and appropriations. And it's flat because the sponsorship money is not being spent. So if you look at the, the departmental budget, it remains even whereas it would normally have gone up quite a bit to accommodate the additional requests being made. So at the sponsorship money, um, is not going directly to any events coordinator. In fact, the location of the events coordinator would be in the Parks and Recreation Department. I can tell you that the workload that all of us have put on Ms. McAllister this year has been phenomenal. Uh, she has been asked to step up her game. Uh, and she has done a phenomenal job in doing so, not just with the quantity, but with the quality of publications that she has put out. And, um, and historically, the city manager's office has always run these special events for the community. And it, they have grown by leaps and bounds. Not just with city special events, but with private special events that require coordination of the application on public parks. You know, we have runs. We never had runs before. Now we've got a couple that we do every year. We have, um, different organizations using our parks. Uh, like the Blueberry Festival, which doesn't use too much, but requires a lot of coordination of taking in the application, uh, farming it out to the departments, finding out what's needed, getting back with the applicant, setting up the schedules for every department to do what they're supposed to be doing, um, getting Valentine Park ready. That's the boots-on-the-ground aspect that our current Parks and Recreation Department does now. While the manager's office does everything else, including like the karaoke nights or farmer's market nights. All of that should be handled in the Parks and Recreation Department. And, um, we have so beefed up, I'm afraid, uh, our public information officer duties, that it's no longer possible for her to do that same level of PIO duty and put on, uh, do the paperwork coordination for the special events. So starting now, and I know it's only August tenth, we're, we're getting our applications in order for the boulog party. You know, and they're starting to come in. And it's quite a feat to manage all the paper with that. So, um, you know, she'd have to stop doing the PIO duties that you like in order to focus on that. And at the same time, she's coming on board with the Everbridge system. We had our first meetings today with the state of Florida on that. And, you know, now that all of our policies have been approved, the work begins. And it's a lot of work. We had provided you an estimate of five hundred and forty man-hours to get it up and going. And folks, that's eleven weeks of doing nothing but that. So, you know, the duties have piled on so that you either have to take a step backwards if you don't get, uh, a special events coordinator, or you need another person. And we'll be up and going in about six months. You have to train the, the person. I mean, it'll be helpful from the very beginning, but they won't be acting independently.
Dana, weigh in on this?
I mean. I was thinking, couldn't we just move Maddie up to being the community events coordinator?
And then not have a PIO?
Yeah, since she's already doing the work. Then maybe get her an assistant? I don't know.
Well, regardless, it would be another position.
Right.
So, um, most cities have their own PIO that is the person that gets the information out to the public. And she was hired as a PIO, right?
The PIO job description included both special events and PIO activities. Maddie was hired to perform both. She's done a spectacular job. In order to, uh, you know, make council happy, I've added many more things to her. You have consciously decided to do the Everbridge system. We've had discussions up here about how people want movies.
So the direction of the council, in, since we've all been here together, was that we wanted more communication to the residents and transparency. And, uh, I had brought up the community events coordinator for that reason, number one. But number two is that, you know, we're talking about raising taxes here tonight, or possibly, I should say, right? People want to see where their money's going. They want to know what they're paying for. And they want to be proud in the city that they live in, right? So we also have to have community engagement, which we do. We have our city events, we have our private events. But it's just too much on her plate to be able to fulfill our needs as far as what she's doing for her videos or any, you know, all her PIO stuff that she stepped up, like Dale's saying, has, it's, it's just, it's two jobs now. It's not just one. It's grown. The city's grown and it's grown, right? So, um, I think that the bottom line is, is that she cannot do both jobs, especially with the Everbridge coming in now. So I think that's part of the reason that it's, it's needed too. Um, but also, I think what you said Dale, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, well, you could take a step back
Yeah.
and she could stop doing all these PIO things and do the events. But then all our momentum that we've already been building to. But then, all our momentum that we've already been building to get the residents to go on Orange City Connect, to watch the streaming, to see the social media postings of, or the reels about what we're doing in these meetings because it's always been for the last seven years for me is hardly anybody comes out to watch the meetings. They're busy, they have busy lives or, you know, so then we get the streaming, we're hoping that they're going to watch, you know, online. Um, and, and I think Kaylee said we had twenty last time, so that's twenty more than we had before, right?
There are four currently.
Okay, so there's four, but the, the bottom line is it's our job to get our residents engaged in what we're doing here and, and to, to educate them on how this works. And when they hear us up here, then they, they learn. And I, I actually put a message on Facebook recently. It said, "Come to a city council meeting or watch it. You may learn something." Because we are getting trashed on things, especially me, because I have the title, right? But the bottom line is, is if they knew what was really happening, they may go, "I get it," and that's why they're doing that. And so that's why we need the communication and transparency to the residents. And if they're paying for that, it's for them. So, you know, you look at, "Oh, we're going to redo city hall and that's a million dollars," well, that's not for them. They could look at us and go, "Oh, well, they're making their offices nice." You know, I'm just, I'm playing Negative Nellie here, I'm not saying, but the bottom line, this is, this is for them. This is a positive thing for them to add for, for the events in the city, um, to show that we have someone that's coordinating this, right? We've had, um, we've had some hiccups in the past in the events department with insurance, um, permits, whatever. Um, there's not, I believe that there needs to be more consistency on rules for things that makes it easier if there's one person that's watching it. I think at one point, and correct me if I'm wrong, Elisa was helping out with, you said it was in the city manager's office at one point, right? Where you were doing-
She, Elisa takes in all of the special event applications that occur on private property. And she, all of those-
Would that continue if we got an events person?
No.
See, so that would take some off of her.
I would like to, to get that out. We spend an in- inordinate amount of time dealing with that.
Well, and then you got, so you got Parks and Rec, you got Elisa in it, you got Maddie in it, you got three hands in it. So this is what happens and I've seen this happen. So then somebody sends in an application for the Fourth of July, right? And it's missed because it went to Elisa and Elisa got the message and she turns it back to the person and it's last year's application that was not correct, but she didn't know because that's not really her thing. It was, it's, it's going between three people. So I think it's just, clean it up, let's get someone working in that job, let's take some of the, um, the burden off, um, Maddie, Elisa. You know, this, this is what I see and, and, and add that and, and it also makes, helps us when our city grows to have that person to handle those things. So that's just my take, if anybody wants to say anything.
Well, and to Dana's, may I, and to Dana's point, I mean, work-life balance, right? So if we're doing three, three people to do, there's three people doing this one job, that's a lot, right? I think we agree.
And some of them are working nights and even weekends to try to keep up.
Exactly, so.
And that's true, you know, the events coordinator would be doing nighttime events and things like the, uh, the light up and, because I know Maddie's there for that too. And, and Maddie's working all day, then she's there all night. So this, so that comes into what you're talking about, right? So I think there's a lot of positives to it, um, just to answer your question Lisa Marie, I just, uh, I'm passionate about it because I just see things that were not efficient, is a good way to put it. I don't want to put any blame on anybody because everybody was doing the best they could. But I think it would be more efficient, I think it would be, um, a good balance on different positions so that they can all concentrate on what their actual job is.
And one more thing to that is if we've got someone going into overtime, which is great, I think that overtime is what people are looking for. However, from a city budget standpoint, if you're overtired and you put in way too many hours, what kind of quality are you putting out, first of all? Second of all, if it's costing us more money, we might end up like washing. Who knows, you know, that can happen. So, thinking three steps ahead and looking at it from that standpoint, maybe, you know, we don't, we won't know until it comes out in the wash and sometimes you kind of have to take that leap of faith, but I think in order to take three jobs and put it into where they need to be, to end the one that currently has the job, then, I don't know, that's, it makes sense to me.
Dale, did you want to say?
No, but, but Maddie's position is not eligible for overtime.
Okay.
So what you wind up, you know, is that, um-
Elisa?
You know, we have, no, we ha- we have a saying, only a select few can work for Orange City. You know, and the theory is, is you're working a minimum of X number of hours per week. In order to, and it's to get the job done, you work however many hours you need. So you take a person where you've added and added and added and it, it becomes the lack of a life-work balance.
But she's not salary, right?
She is.
She is salary. Oh, okay, I see. That makes sense. Okay.
So, you know, everything you've, um, thrust upon her, us, you know, especially with Everbridge and the timeframes associated with that while you're doing the Fourth of July, while you're putting out a movie, now takes it way beyond a forty-hour work break.
It does. I think Everbridge is going to be excellent. We use it. And I know a lot of large municipalities use it and it's a really good thing. It's great for public safety and notification.
Is there anybody up here that is against, um, adding back in the community events coordinator? I think that's the easiest way to tie this up and finish the conversation. Is everybody on board?
Yes.
Okay.
All the normal things that a city clerk's office or a city manager's office would do, like coffee with the councilmen or organizing the League of Cities dinner or, um, yeah, I knew I'd get her. Eh, 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 it'll stay, it'll stay right where it is. It's just the special events-
Right, right.
-that get put into the Parks and Recreation area.
So it's a Parks and Rec, community events coordinator's a Parks and Rec personnel?
Yes, underneath Ashley, we've had one discussion about that. There'll be a lot more to come as we formulate it, including where they will work because they, there's no place for them at public works. So we're looking at making, uh, some permanent offices, at least for the year, until we figure something else out, um, across the street in the annex.
And just to add a little additional, Maddie does help, um, with the youth advisory council with me. That's a joint effort on our part, um, so that is monthly meetings if they have any type of events and whatnot. So she does have those job duties too.
And would she keep that?
Yes.
And how about the, um, the dinners and things, appreciation dinners, would that stay with you or would that go with the events coordinator?
Stay here.
Okay, just wanted to check.
All the normal council stuff, you know, the citizens academy.
Yeah.
The, um, you know, normal council initiatives stay in the manager's or clerk's office.
Just curious.
Parks and Recreation items go over to Parks and Rec.
Does, uh, Ashley, did you want to say anything in regards to the, if we were to add the events coordinator? Do you have any comment on that? Because this is your department, so I thought-
I've been with the city for seven years.
Come up here. Come up here, because we're on, we're on TV. You're on candid camera.
Being with the city for seven years, coming into a position that was already developed as, as far as my title, I mean, everything was just split that way. We've never really had our evaluation of, you know, how it really should be. So, I mean, I don't know how it would work. I mean, I mean, I'm happy for our position and I know that, you know, there is a lot of things going on, you know, with Maddie having to do so many things in relation to it. I don't touch anything dealing with applications at all. So, all sixty applicants for the block party go to her. And then they call her at least every other day, "M I M, did you get my application?" So-
Yeah, Fourth of July and all that too, right?
Yeah, so it's a lot of, uh, customer service in relation to that, which I didn't handle. I handled just basically getting the inflatables, setting up the, you know, the event location and logistics, so.
Would, would, so would the events coordinator take that off your plate? Because that's kind of in that realm of getting the inflatables and booking, right? So that would take some off of you too.
Yes.
So it would be a collaborative of taking a lot of-
So, so we would work all this out. We wouldn't throw anyone to the wolves. We would sit down, you know, work out the transition. Our office would continue to help till the new person is trained. It would be, instead of a maintenance position, more of a, you know, a clerical and in the field at the events type of position. A lot of organization, more of an administrative type position.
Right.
With outdoor work. We've pulled job descriptions-
Hands-on.
-from other agencies. We've, you know, analyzed what the salary band should be. That's how we've got it presented there. In fact, I think you went ahead and created that position in paper only.
I did?
No.
Oh.
I'm looking at you, but you as the council.
Oh, I was gonna say, I didn't do that.
No, I think I did it when we did the pay plan adjustment. I may not have, but I've got all the, the information to do so. And of course, it'll take a while to get it up and going because of everything that's involved in creating a whole new way of doing things.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Devlin?
All right, so I have two police officers and a community events coordinator. Council is good with that?
Everybody go with that? Lisa Marie?
The community events coordinator does for next year's budget, right?
Correct.
So how can you help her now?
Well, next year's budget starts October first, so it's only a couple of months and then-
Oh, okay.
But I mean, if you want to volunteer your time, I'm sure she'd be happy. I'm just kidding.
So, so-
Lisa raised her hand first.
So it's always a transition, folks, and you know, things don't happen. I wish I could do that and make everything work exactly right. There may be some weeks where we don't have a movie online or, you know, some where we can't make the posting because we are organizing right now for Halloween. And Halloween is not going to wait until October one. And October one, you know, would be-
Christmas.
-the very earliest day we could possibly have a human being onboard. And I doubt that that will be the case, so.
So, a question about that, so, um, so you, you hired a new HR director, right? So we have two in that, uh, office now. Wouldn't they be the ones that would create the position to, you know, to create the job duties and things like that in order to be al- and then would, and then the sec- second part of that question is, is would it, it would just be advertised like any other position and people would apply? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, first, we have a pay schedule and that is approved by council through ordinance. And if we didn't put it on with the last round, and I'm not, I'd have to look at that, um, then we would need to do an ordinance to create the position.
I see.
And that typically, uh, comes to you in September, once we know what we're, we're doing with the budget and any positions that need to be increased. And you typically vote on your pay ranges due to your budgetary constraints. I want to say your second meeting in September, then we advertise. And the new person will be starting August twenty-eighth, am I correct? In personnel, or personnel director? She starts August twenty-eighth. I think you'll, you'll like her a lot, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Devlin?
Okay. So the two police officers, uh, two police vehicles associated with the two new police officer positions can be paid for out of, uh, police impact fees. So the total impact of all the changes discussed this evening is five hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars to the general fund. And now we'll talk about some ways that we may be able to fund these things. Obviously, there's always the option to increase the millage rate. You can reduce that savings, um, and fund up to an additional five, two hundred and fifty thousand using recurring revenues. So I, I just want to clarify that. So the two hundred and fifty thousand is the difference between the recurring revenue and recurring expenditure. I currently have the grant writer, the fireworks, the attorney services and a PIO camera coming out of that pot, um, leaving a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. You have the option to defer additional recurring capital or other initiatives, reduce service levels or personnel or freeze vacant positions, which would essentially be me going back and looking at projecting vacancies and figuring out how, um, vacancies might come about over the next year and the savings would be built into the budget. But the department, if a vacancy happens, they won't be able to fill the position till X amount of months to recoup that. So that's an option. So let me tell you where we're at with the millage rate. As we were funding the police officer positions, the community events coordinator and the pay raises that were discussed tonight, um, if you were to increase the millage rate to cover those, uh, budgetary increases, you're looking at a rate of seven point two three eight seven. That is-
In between.
Lower than the rate was in tax year twenty twenty-two. That would be a eleven point three three percent increase over the rolled-back rate and it will require five votes to pass.
Could you say that again?
Sure. So to fund, if you were to increase the millage rate to fund the police officer positions, community event coordinator and the pay raises, you're looking at a millage rate of seven point two three eight seven.
And what was the total? You said it was like five hundred and-
Five hundred and sixty-six thousand, four fifty-five, so a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand coming out of that recurring revenue versus expenditure. That leaves four hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred that would need to be covered by other means.
So, sorry.
Go ahead.
So where we're at currently with our current year's six point eight six nine one and our prior year was at six point eight six nine one, we'd be going up three mils if we were to do the, well, three and a half, I guess you'd say, seven point two three eight seven. Is that right?
Do the math in here.
And while you're doing that math, can you look at the, the annual increase over rollback, um, ish?
So, to answer your first question, that would be a increase of low over, a little over three tenths of a mil, so-
Okay, three tenths.
Point three six.
Yep.
Three, point three seven. And it's seven, it's eleven-
Sorry.
No problem. And, and it's eleven point three three percent. It would be an increase over the rolled-back rate of eleven point three three percent.
So it puts us in the neighborhood of about one oh six?
Increase, you mean?
Yeah, the annual increase over rolled-back.
Rolled-back.
Not at where we're at, over rolled-back.
All right, pretty close. Because one twelve is seven point two six.
So over the rolled-back, if you were looking at the millage rate, is that, it would be, um, about point seven four?
Point seven four. The impact to the average SFR is what I was kind of looking at.
Okay, I have that. So the average home value is currently a hundred and forty-six thousand. It would equate to a, about a hundred and eight dollar increase to our annual tax bill.
Okay, so in between the ninety-eight and one twelve, so one oh eight annually.
To be fair.
Yeah, not, yeah, okay.
Hundred and eight.
One oh eight divided by twelve.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do.
For a hundred and forty-six thousand taxable value?
Taxable value.
Correct.
Do we have that number? So, it ain't working.
But that's taxable value, yeah.
Uh, that's about nine dollars a month.
Yeah, based on one forty-six.
So, nine dollars a month gives you two police officers, an events coordinator.
Well, based on a hundred and forty-six thousand, so if your house, the home is valued at.
Higher.
Yeah.
Then it's higher. Okay.
That's based.
But that's the average household here.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's just say it was twenty bucks a month at a high, you know, a high, uh, end. Think about all the things that we just added to, um, to the budget to make things run easier, more efficient. Um, the grant writer to bring us money back in. She brings us millions, right? Um, what else do we have in there? Do you have the list?
The two police officers, the community events coordinator.
Oh, and there, and then everything else that's already, was already in the budget, right, for the original, not anything that was unfunded.
The new attorney.
That's a lot of stuff. Think about it, that, that's a big impact of what we're doing. And the other thing I wanted to point out was, if you look at the tenure snapshot, I think Dawn said this, but if you look at it, in two thousand fifteen, we were seven point four five. That's higher than what we're asking for right now. And, and then we went up to eight point oh six in two thousand seventeen eighteen. So, we were up to eight, and I can't remember, I, I was on the council two thousand eighteen nineteen, it was eight point oh three four oh. I, you know, I was trying to think, what were we doing in those years that we needed that money? Mill Lake Park, that's right, okay. So, we have, we also have our capital projects that we're, you know, putting money away for, um, for the future. So, there's a lot, there's a lot this council's really doing, if you think about it. We're moving the city here. We're, we're getting more positions. We're trying to build buildings, um, infrastructure. You know, we have stormwater things and, and, and I'm just gonna say this on a public record, you know, um, yes, we raised the trash, but we needed to. It hadn't been raised in years because we had the same company and our level of service was not the desired levels or, I'll just say that. Um, so, to pay a little bit more for our trash, now we have two men in a truck and, um, hopefully Christine won't be spending most of her day doing trash calls, right? I'm just gonna, you know, so there's another balance right there of taking off that burden off, but, so, yes, we raised the trash fees, but we also made things more efficient for the city and for the residents so that they don't have to pick up their trash all over the neighborhood, um, hydraulic fluid in front of their house, or, or trash trucks burning in neighborhoods. So, that was a good move, council. I'm proud of that, for all of us to do that. So, if anybody asks you, how could you do that? That's what you say. Think about it. We, we made a good move on that. Um, we raised the stormwater. We just had several major storms. Look around to any city in Volusia County that didn't do that, right? So, we, we, I think that was a great move for the council to do too. I'm proud to say that we, we made that decision because we're, we're getting things done here. We're gonna, you know, we're trying to repipe the city. We're trying to put new wells in. I mean, there's a lot going on that the residents don't know about, so I wanted to put that out there, right? So, because the last thing we want to do is raise taxes, right? Think about it. It, it, we have to pay it too. It's, it's just reality, but our jobs up here are to make the city run smoothly with the city manager and the staff, of course, right? And these things that we're adding do that, so, um, sometimes you have to do that. You raise it, and if you look, my point of the story was, is that when you look at the, the recap, the tenure recap, we went up, we went down. We went really up in that, that year for Mill Lake Park, and that was building a new park. This is public safety. This is, you know, community engagement. So, this is our vision as our council now, right? So, I just want you to keep an eye on that when, when we discuss about whether we want to raise the millage rate or anything. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Mary? You're good? You're quiet.
I think, um, one of the things I've learned since I've, I've been up here is, you come up here with the intention, you want to protect the citizens and you want to make sure that their money's being spent properly. That it's not being, you know, just throw caution to the wind and see where it falls. But I've also learned that you've got to make decisions to help make the city run as well. And try not to impact the citizens where and if you can. And I think in today's world, we all know what inflation's been like. Money's gotta come from somewhere to pay for all this stuff. Citizens want things done. They want sidewalks fixed. They want this fixed. It takes money. And unfortunately, we're a small town. We've, we've had a lot of development happen. It's out, been out of our control because of the state.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, we've got to come up with some money somewhere and we only, the only choice we have is this. There's, we've cut and cut and cut everywhere we can and I've, you know, this is the first time I've ever really looked into a, a budget like this. And what citizens need to understand, because I've learned myself this year, is the budgets like we do for our family, right, are nothing like what we have to look at for the city and to, to be able to run and where those funds sit and that they can't be moved around and tossed around. Oh, well, we'll just move it from here to here. We can't rob Peter to pay Paul, so to speak. So, you know, it's not, it's not that, I don't think we, any of us want to raise any taxes at all. Cause those of us that live, we all live in Orange City, we're gonna have to pay for it too. I personally don't want to pay for it, but, you know, my husband's retired. He's on a fixed income and I'm the only full-time worker in the household. But at the same time, I understand what has to be done.
And I think that it's good if the, if the citizens know where their money's going. That's real important for us to get that message out, so they know where they're spending their money. It's not, well, oh, you're, you're, you're patting your pockets. That's not the case. You just said it. You're, you're the one making the money in the household. You know what I mean? So, it's just important to, to let them know that we're people too, and we're just trying to make the best decisions to make the city run good, right? And I wanted to make one example, um, when the roads washed out. And, and we kept hearing, why is it taking you so long to fix those roads? Remember that, everybody?
Yes.
It's called money. If we would've had the citizens pay for it, that would've been in here too, even more, right? But the staff went out and found grants to help out, to take that burden off the residents, so it's a collaborative between the staff and the council and, and, you know, everybody up here. So, I just want them to know that our goal is not to raise the taxes and put a burden on anybody. It's to make the city run good and, and have people proud to, to live here, basically, and have the services.
It's certainly not to pat our own pockets.
No.
Um, that's, that's the, the message is, I've noticed starting to come out. I came on this council broke, I'll go off this council broke.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Yep, so that, to that point, to parlay off of what you just said and what you just said also, I'd like to say that for the time that I've watched in the audience for the last four years and then now coming on city council, I have seen that the progress that the city has made and with the challenges that have been put forth, and I believe a lot of effort has been put in for Christine and Kaylee and, um, certainly Dale, making these things happen. And it takes time and it takes planning and it takes frustration and it takes sweat, tears, blood, all that good stuff to make all of this happen. And I think that is what has happened. So, if you look and you see, like you said, our tenure snapshot, you look at how we've gone up and down and we've kind of gone down before, but it, it, it is a balancing act. We can't help but have a little bit more sometimes if we're trying to get to a common goal. We all see that we're making the, the, um, the water more potable. We're also seeing our stormwater getting fixed. We see our drains. We see when the streets are torn up and people are complaining about that, but they're also seeing that it's getting fixed. So, all of these things, it's just a huge orchestra and Dale's over there leading it, and I don't know how she does it, but it's, it's, it's definitely a difficult position to be in and it's, um, I think that we've made a lot of great attempts to get to where we need to be. So, yes, sometimes we have to increase and sometimes we get to decrease. And hopefully, we've got everything to where we need it to be, where it just runs like a well-oiled machine. We're putting in the capital N, we're saving the money. We're putting the capital N, we're saving the money. We're doing the projects, we're saving the money. And then we just keep going that way.
It all costs money. That's, that's the sad part. If we could do it for free, we would. And, um, I wanted to also say, finance has a big part in this too.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, of course.
Cause he's the one that keeps things, you know, balanced too. So, thank you, you know. But I, I, I think you hear it, like, we all work together here on this. And, and so, um, you know, I'm in, I'm in favor of going to seven point two three eight seven, just to fund things that we all discussed tonight. Um, and, and you know, maybe next year, the, the following budget, maybe we can come back down. You never know what's gonna happen with, with the development that's coming in or whatever it may be, grants or whatever comes into, can help us in the future, but right now, um, I think, uh, Councilwoman Stafford said it before, we're feeling it. There's a lot of things that are expensive right now and, and everybody's feeling the economy and, and this is, and this is tough to even think about raising it. But if we don't, we're gonna be hurting in certain areas and we're not gonna be consistent. We're not gonna be transparent. We're not gonna be, um, efficient to have a, a, a stable police department or a fire department. You know, we, we need to, to fund these things to keep things moving. So, um, I think Deltona stated at one time, they said that they were the city on the move. Well, I think that's where we're heading. You know, we're, we're trying to move things to make it better and, and it's not free.
We could, it could be worse.
And I, I really understand the increase in, in millage rate. But right now, with everything that we are going through, as a city and a whole, I mean, increase a little but not a lot. We're looking at, like I said before, people that's on set incomes. Okay, we're gonna do an increase on, on garbage. We're gonna do an increase on storm. We're gonna do an increase in millage taxes. We're gonna do an increase in who knows what in the future. What I, what I, what I'm looking at is those people out there, it's gonna really hurt a lot of people. And some people are gonna lose homes and everything else behind this. I really do feel like they will. Because taxes are steadily going up, whether it's insurance, whether it's whatever. Nowadays, you, you can't find insurance that's reasonable. And then we're gonna increase their taxes, but the value of their home, it's a lot on people. It's a lot on people that we're asking. It really is. And why should we be one of the highest millage rate cities in Volusia County? One of, out of five. Why would we, why would we want to do that to our residents? That's, that's my whole thing. Why are we gonna put something that's gonna be out of reach for a lot of people to hold on? Because they're struggling to hold on now. People are really struggling really, really hard. And if we have a, a, um, tight pocket for now, maybe next year. But we really need to look at our residents and how it's gonna affect them in the long run.
And to your point, I agree with you. We, I, I am one of those residents and I am on a fixed income and I am one income and I, and I get what you're saying. And I totally do, and I think that we do need to look out for that. But we also have a duty to fiscally take care of the city for the residents because without taking care of the, the city, what is, what, their property taxes go down, things start to crumble. And if we can go back down at some point, there's, there's always that ability to be able to, to pull it back down. Once we figure out where we're at, it's kind of hard to see in the future, right? If we could foretell, like, like Dale said, if she could just blink and it would be, it would be great. But what we also have to look at is that we're working towards getting our city to where some of these, these years that they have, I mean, the various, three point four zero, their proposed rate is three point six five. They have a different structure than Orange City, obviously. So, we're not comparing the same city.
They don't have their own police department either.
They don't have those things. So, there's a lot of things to consider when we're looking at these, and I understand what you're saying and you're trying to make it better for the residents, but this is making it better for the residents. And we have to sometimes kind of like walk through the forest to get out of the forest. We can't just sit there. We have to figure it out. We have to push and kind of get these things taken care of, our stormwater. It just, it was a perfect storm, not to be having a pun, but it was the perfect storm. Everything just kind of happened. And so, it's not that we're trying to make anything difficult on anybody because trust me, that's the last thing I want to do. I want to care for the elderly, the people on fixed income. I, I volunteer and do things like that. I did it when Alex was here. He did too. So, and you do too. Everyone does. I mean, that's why we're here. That's why we do what we do. But as far as being able to fund safety, I think that's important. We definitely, right?
I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, yeah, I know. So, it's a hard position for us to be up here in, and I think that we, we don't want to make these choices lightly, but we also want to be effective in making sure that our budget is balanced because we can't just like throw, throw it out there and then we have zero dollars if there's a huge tragedy, right? We gotta have that, that funding there somehow. So, we have to make these, these decisions. I was actually looking at the millage rate going, how are we gonna do that? We, we obviously aren't going to the max that we set it at, but we're, we're way far from what the max is. And we're way far from what it was in twenty twenty, when we had all of that disaster happen in twenty twenty, twenty eighteen, when our, our, our.
Mill Lake.
Well, Mill Lake, but it was also our property values and everything, if you remember. Um, was it twenty eighteen? No, I'm sorry, it was two thousand eight, sorry.
Yeah, no.
I digress. But anyway, so I hear what you're saying and I agree with you on that. It's just, it's a hard balancing act to coordinate. It's a hard, it's hard all the way around.
Well, let me ask you this question. And it's a what if. Ad, ad blorum tax go away and we already done planned all these things in our budget. Where would that leave us then? Would that go back on the taxpayers to bring in more money from some other sources?
Again, that's, it's hard to see with the crystal ball. We will, we don't know. We don't know what's gonna happen, just like we heard from fire saying, this is something that may not happen for five, ten years whenever they're deciding to do that. So, we don't know. We, you know, we don't know what's coming down the pipe. We also don't know if they're going to increase the homestead exemption, which would save money on the tax side. So, see what I'm saying? Uh, it, there's just no way to really know. So, when you go up by this little increment, which seems like in the grand scheme of things, yeah, I get what you're saying. It's a, it's a hundred and eight dollar a year. It's a twelve dollar a month, based on a hundred and forty-six, exactly.
So, there's no home base in Orange City about that price?
One forty-six, yeah, so.
Are you saying there's no homes in Orange City that are one forty-six? Cause that's the average, right?
That is our average. So, that, that's the average of the taxable value. The longer a person, the longer a person has lived in their home, the, generally, the lower their taxable value is.
Oh, cause of the homestead.
No, because of the three percent camp, cap. So, let's just say, for example, I've lived in my home for thirty years and I bought it at seventy-five thousand dollars. The most it could go up during those thirty years is about, thirty years, mind you, is to get it to around that value right then. Then you deduct your homestead exemptions from it and any other exemptions you have. And you pay your taxes on that. Let's contrast it to a brand new home that is in Park Hill. They're going to be paying three hundred thousand for their house uh, at, two years ago, and now it's worth three fifty. They're paying taxes on three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars cause it can only go up a maximum of three percent per year. It's reset only when you sell your house. So, or, or, yeah, sell it or you move, move and you can even portable some of your home, of your valuation with you now. So, if a person has been in their home for a long time, we have people who are paying very little in taxes. In fact, I believe we have some people who are paying nothing in taxes. Are paying very little in taxes, in fact, I believe we have some people who are paying nothing in taxes. Due to their exemptions and the low value of their house, because they bought it so long ago. And our newer residents, then the closer you are to having moved in, the higher your valuation is.
You're absolutely right.
Though there really are houses out there, you know, that pay.
I mean, there's even bad ones that, that have exemptions, right? They don't pay either.
Like twenty different kinds of exemptions.
All kinds, whatever, all kinds.
And we are still being impacted by the great recession of two thousand seven, two thousand eight, because if you think about it, the, the. The city took a huge hit when the recession happened and reset the property values, I think like fifty-eight thousand. So if you think about every year, it's only three percent, three percent, three percent, you know, um, it's significant.
So, I, I just wanna bring this back in, cause I think we've had a lot of conversation about this, but. I think you said, what, would you say eleven dollars a, a month or twelve dollars a month on the average of what the hundred forty-six thousand or whatever? If you wanted to shoot a little bit high on a, you know, a three hundred fifty thousand dollar house, you know. I'm just saying, cause we have a lot of new development, it's gonna be.
Three hundred thousand dollar taxable value would be eighteen dollars a month.
Okay, that's what I was thinking about twenty, so, I'm saying twenty on, on the high end. And I know that, that people are on fixed incomes and people are struggling and things are tough, but. And I don't want this to sound the wrong way, but we have to take the emotion out of it and we have to be stewards of the money. And, and make the right decisions to move this forward, because if we don't, we're not gonna, like, the two police officers alone is. I think I did the math, it was like three hundred and some thousand, right? Hundred and seventy times two. That's a big bulk of that, that we would have to raise for, just those two officers, right? The other, other things are kind of, I'll just call them fluff, they're not as much as that. So the public safety is really eating up that most of, if we just did the two police officers. How much would the, we would increase the mills for that?
So, I would just be backing out the community events coordinator, cause you'd still have to do the pay increase for the, the, um, union. It's, uh, seven point one six nine two, if you backed out the community events coordinator.
And then what would that be broken down for?
So that's ten point two six percent increase over the rollback rate, that would be. A increase of ninety-eight dollars.
So you see the difference, it's not, it's, it's, it's literally. It's just, it doesn't make a huge difference to take even some of it off, to be honest with you, so. We all agreed to have two more police officers. And the only way we can do that, honestly, is to raise the millage rate, that I see, unless you all have another idea, I don't know any other way to do that. To, to, to tie this up, really. That's reality and public safety is important, so as much as it's gonna be hard for everybody. We have to be the stewards and the persons, or the people that explain why, why it's happening. And, and neighbors have to help neighbors, I mean, you all know, I run a nonprofit, I feed people every day, because they're struggling. And there's plenty of nonprofits out there that help people, your sister runs one, right? So, it's just, things are hard right now, but. I think we have to kind of put that aside a little bit, because we still have decisions to make up here that affects everybody in this room also. And how are we gonna fix this problem? It's, it's a problem that we don't have enough officers. In my eyes, I feel like it is, and I, and I've heard it expressed from deputy chief, and, and you heard chief, he would love to have a couple more officers. Because we just put two of our officers in the schools, they're not even gonna be on the road anymore, so now we have even less during the day. So, this is a need that we need to, to protect our citizens, so it's, it's not, it's not that we wanna hurt them, it's not that we wanna add. More taxes, it's, we really don't have a choice, you know what I mean, to, to, to make this happen. Um, if we pulled back those other things, it really doesn't make a huge difference for a couple dollars. I mean, to make or break someone, to be honest with you, so, um, you know. We do need a motion, don't we? Oh, we don't?
Nope, not in the public workshop, I think we have the direction. And if the council's good, I'd like to recommend that we cancel the second workshop that was tentatively scheduled for August fifth.
Before you say that, I think you also stated that we have to have five votes to go to that millage rate. So keep that in mind, I don't wanna waste anybody's time up here, cause if we don't have that five votes. Then we're back to the drawing board again, right? And we're gonna be here again, going through it again and again and again. So just keep that in mind, and the other thing I wanted to express is that I had asked this, um, this morning, I'll say it was late. For a copy of the, uh, le, the general ledger. Just so the council could see the money that goes in and out of the city. I think it's important, we're making the decisions on the budget here, so we need to know where's our money going. And we're the stewards of the money, right? So that's why we, that's why I asked to share it with the council, so that we can see. Where the money's going or what money's coming in, and also, um, I just lost my train of thought. Was basically just to ex, tell the story, because we get everything in, in like a, a, a group. You know, administration or, you know, each, each category, so I thought it would be good to tell you all a story of where the money goes. And then that way you can explain to the residents too, where the money goes, it's not, you know, we're not just spending it, you know. Yeah, exactly, you know what I mean, so I thought that would be, so thank you for supplying that, but. I don't know, I didn't, really didn't have a chance to look at it, cause we got it this afternoon, I kinda peeked over, I don't know if y'all did or not, cause it's a lot. It was, I think it was thousands of pages, right? Would you say? Yeah.
Fourteen thousand and three, but who's counting?
So I was, I would like to suggest that y'all look at that and then decide if we want a second workshop, because. You may wanna look at that and decide if there's, if there's anything in there that, um, would help this, does that make sense?
You will need to call your workshop tomorrow night if you want a second one.
Oh, okay.
I'm just letting you know.
So you got tonight until midnight to read it, no, just kidding.
That'll put you to sleep.
We, we can, you know, work on the premise that you're going to have it.
Oh, okay.
And then if nobody comes, we'll be here.
Well, no, but you couldn't you, couldn't you just be on the premise that we're gonna have it, i- if we decide to have it and then if we. If everybody weighs in and says we don't need it, we can cancel it?
You need to do that tomorrow night too. Remember, the actions you take are, are have to be done as a.
Right.
So, you can't do that by calling me up. You have to take an action to have a meeting or not.
Okay.
Unless you wanna give me the authority. Which has been done in the past.
That's what I thought, so I don't, I don't, what do you think? I don't see a problem with that if you all weigh in and say we're good, we don't really need it. You, you could do it as a, yeah, I need to hear you all, what you wanna say. I know we don't, we're not in favor of having a lot of meetings, I get that, cause we all work or not work or whatever, but. This is important to look at this ledger and just, and just to, to, to see what's happening. Because he sees it every day, and I'm sure she does too, or, or the, the regular, sorry, the regular departments, they know what they're spending. As a council in seven years, I've never seen what you all have spent in each department. And I look at, when I looked at it today, I thought, I saw some things that might, might've, could've got shaved off those departments that really didn't need to be spent. And maybe that's part of saving money in the future where we don't have to raise the taxes, because we can shave in other areas. So that's, that's what, what my thoughts were when I looked at it today, I thought, hmm, do we really need to spend that much on this or that or? And maybe we do, that's the questions we would ask the manager, right? Maybe we do.
Budget is a working document, I've got to say, and no budget is, um. Followed one hundred percent to the T, there's some shifting in between categories.
Sure.
Each one of those with their new ERP is assigned a project. Number on any big event and they're tracked, and actually you do get a monthly report. It is called your budget in brief, that tells you exactly where we are on spending everything by department. It's a budget in brief report.
It's in brief, but it's bundled, it's like, the clerk's office spent this much and, you know, right. This is, what we got was a ledger that was detailed with every expense for the year. Well, actually, you were gracious enough to give us the last years too, and I was like, whoa, we don't really need that, cause we're done with that year. But it was good to see what it, what's, what's going on. It, it gives us, I feel like it's, gives us a better picture up here of what your jobs are, what you're sp, spending money on, right? When we look at these League of City things that we're going to, we see how much money it costs, right? Or, or just regular training for the clerk or, you know, finance or whatever, it's, it's just important to see all that, because that tells the story.
How much we throw out in Halloween candy every year.
I saw that too.
Lot, lots of things.
But that's what I'm saying, it might be a better, it, it's good for the council to see that, I think, because then you can look at it and go. Wow, we spend that much money on that, maybe we need to shift gears in a different direction. And, and that will allow us in the future not to raise the taxes, because we saved money in another spot. That's just my thought.
I, I think there's always truth in, in everything that you see, you know, obviously, it's one person's take is not another person's take, right? So, I mean, I'm, I'm happy that I got the general ledger to look at, it's, it's very, that's just kinda like one of my things anyway. So I like looking at numbers and so, it's interesting to me.
I, I would just urge you, and I can't help but say this. I find, have found it very futile in the past to spend our time at the council level discussing how many. Pens, how much paper, um, how many little things we need, whether or not there's a better way to do things.
Wasn't the idea, it was just to see where money's going.
Yep, I, I, I get.
Operations are operations, I mean, we all, we all have ran businesses or worked somewhere and understand, I think that. Um, it's just, sometimes you look at it and there, another perspective may help to. Change it a little bit, to make it a little more, um, softer, softer on the residents, if we find things that we really just. We've been funding for years that we might go, a, a, and this is a bad example maybe, but let's just say. Everybody up here says, you know, I don't, I don't want the youth council anymore, and that's not the case, I'm just using an example, but. That's, that's one thing we fund, and you can see on that ledger how much we pay for that. Or, or a luncheon or whatever it may be, so I thought it would be a good round thing for y'all to look at and say. You know what, maybe we don't need that anymore, or maybe we need that. So I think it's just good for the whole council to, to see that, so I appreciate you doing that, and. It's public record, if anybody else wants to see it, it's fourteen thousand pages long, okay? So with that being said, um, we don't have to vote on it tonight, you said, we're just given direction. And then when we bring it back, we would have to have five votes for that particular millage. But if we do not get those five votes for some reason, cause Fran's not here either, um, then what happens?
So I'll have my computer, I'll stand up there and I'll recalculate, 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 but really we need to have. An idea of where we wanna be, because we are required statutorily to, to pass the, the trim and, or the, um.
Yes.
Millage rate and the budget by the end of the month.
Okay, I just wanted to put that out there, so we all know what's going on.
You don't get your five votes, then generally where you find yourself being is in a position to lower the millage rate. Until you do get five, you know, until you get the requisite number of votes. So, and it would mean having to cut out.
What we just talked about, yeah.
Pardon me?
We'd have to cut out what we just talked about?
Well, that, or you make a cut somewhere else in your budget.
Right.
So remember, one of the things we didn't talk about was what else you would like to cut out. There you go, you can make decisions to cut something else out, you could make decisions to lay off. Uh, positions that are not currently filled or to put them in a soft freezing hold. There's a variety of options that are available to you, but they will require you weighing. How much you want these new things and what you're willing to give up.
Right, got you. Can I just ask one question? So do we have positions out there that have been vacant forever, not ever, but they've been vacant for a very long time, but we're still holding? Okay, I didn't think so either.
So, you know, in any given year, we're going to run through ten to fourteen percent of our vacancies. And we have some positions that are harder to fill than others, because that's just the way the marketplace is.
That being said, is there anything else that we need to discuss, or are we good to go? Do we need a motion to adjourn this time?
Yeah.
Kaylee?
Well, we didn't last time, I had to ask, okay? I mean, I'm going by my script here, all right, I need a motion to adjourn. Got a motion, we got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Hit your little thing.
I forget what I was supposed to say next.
Or adjourn.
Oh, no, that's not next, what was it? All opposed, say nay, thank you.